Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting of May 18th, 7 o'clock. And thank you for being patient with us while we had a brief delay while the Board finished up our prior business. I would like to welcome all of you in attendance tonight. We have a very full agenda with a lot of business before the Board and a lot of celebrating to do of accomplishments at the district tonight. If you would like to follow along with an agenda, there are agendas immediately outside of the boardroom here on a small table. You can find those. If you're following along at home, you can follow along with our agenda on our website, lavoniapublicschools.org. Go to the School Board tab and hover over that tab. You can drop down to Agendas and find an Agenda so you can follow along with us this evening. We will be hearing audience communication this evening. If you are interested in presenting information to the Board this evening, if you could pick up a blue slip, looks like this, it was right outside the Board door also, and see that that gets to Mrs. Jenkins, if you could wave your hand for us? That'll help us to make sure that's facilitated properly. The type of meeting tonight is a general meeting. That means that the items that are coming before the Board this evening have been discussed at at least one, if not two or more, prior meetings. So you may not see the depth of discussion that you would expect if this is the first time that you're attending a Board of Education meeting. And that is because it has been around the Board at least twice typically before it comes to us this evening. So a lot of our questions and answers have been handled. If you are really interested in some of the back and forth discussion that happens with the Board about issues that come before us for a vote, I do suggest strongly that you either attend or tune into a committee of the whole meeting. Those are typically the week before this type of a meeting, and that's where we just get right down to the nitty gritty questions and answers. And those can get lengthy, so get a cup of coffee. But that's where we can see a whole lot more discussion than you might be expecting to see if this is your first time attending a voting meeting this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is a roll call. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura's absent. Mrs. McDonnell?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. Ms. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Jarvis, would you help us leave the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is Communications. And we welcome Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Our first item tonight, good evening, President Burton, by the way, members of the Board, Dr. Leepa. Our first item is the Student Art Gallery. Tonight, we conclude this school year's Student Art Gallery program, which throughout the year has featured the incredible works of students from our middle schools and high schools. Our elementary school works have been featured monthly in the hallway, on the display boards in the hall outside of the boardroom. I know that I do not speak for myself when I say that it's been a true pleasure to have our creative and talented students share their work with us here at the Board Office. We plan to continue this program next school year so that it isn't, so this won't be the last of the works that you'll see here on the otherwise plain whiteboard behind you. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present certificates to five students from Holmes Middle School who were selected by their art teacher, Joan Haber. And Joan, if you'd raise your hand, Joan's with us tonight, to have their works on display for the next month or so, the final month or so of the school year, in our Student Art Gallery. Tonight, they will be presented with a certificate, which reads, "Lavonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery, Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Holmes Middle School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, May 18th, 2015." And this is signed by myself and Dr. Randy Leepa. So, without further ado, first I'd like to welcome, our first recipient is Eliana Shalafel. And Eliana is a 7th grader at Holmes. Come on up. There you go. And which, this time around, we have, as you notice, more than five works on the Board. So which group of works is yours, Eliana?
I have the owl in the corner, and then the parrot at the top.
Oh, okay. Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Haley Demers, who is an 8th grader. Oh, Haley's not here. We'll make sure that Haley gets her certificate. We'll move along to Natalie Kelzer, who is a 7th grader. Welcome, Natalie. There you go. And which group is yours?
The dragon on the top right and the sunrise thing on the bottom.
Okay, the yellow and black?
Yep.
Okay, very nice.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Erin Ramsey, who is an 8th grader. Erin?
The purple face and the lion and landscape next to it.
Okay.
That's cool.
And can you say a couple of words about the lion piece? It's most unusual.
Yeah.
Would you like me to?
Sure.
Okay. The lion piece looks like a shutter, so it looks like a lion if you're standing to the right of the picture. If you move to the left, it turns into the landscape. It's very cool. You'll have to check it out at the break. Thank you, Erin. And last but not least, tonight, we have Dana Schur. Are you okay now?
And which pieces are yours? The purple background one there, the cereal box design marsupial munch, and then the golden black one also next to it.
Okay, very nice. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes our presentation for the Student Art Gallery for this school year. Join me in congratulating these students once again and thank them for sharing their work.
Congratulations to our students and thank you to our art teachers, who started when they were very little and continue to help these kids produce works that absolutely amaze me, because this is not a talent that I possess.
Mrs. Burton, if I can just add one thing, a little off topic, but not, we know Joan Haber's back here, the great art teacher over at Holmes. And with her is Carol Dazer, who is a physical education teacher at Cass and has been in our district for a long time. And I had this actually scheduled for the reports under Superintendent, but if it's okay, if I can just share-
Oh, go right ahead.
-another award, since Carol's here and she may not be here a little bit later.
Come on up, Carol.
Yeah, come on up, Carol. We're just, this is impromptu, we're gonna get you up here. But Cass Elementary received the School Wellness Award. Yes. Sorry, Carol, if I don't know.
Sorry, my hair, I've been upside down.
She's gonna get me for this.
Yeah.
She's gonna get me for this. But Carol, through her work, was recognized with the School Wellness Award, which was provided by the Michigan Department of Education to school districts that provide outstanding healthy work, school environments. And so, as we know, Carol's been very, very involved in this in our schools for several years, and this is a great recognition for the work that she's done, those kids at the school have done, the principal and all the staff at Cass Elementary. So I just wanted to take that opportunity, I was gonna do it a little bit later.
Thank you.
But since Carol is here already, we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize her along with our students tonight.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Cass Elementary received the Silver Award up at the Capitol Building this past Wednesday, and I went up to receive the award. And it was quite nice to sit in the Capitol Building at this little ceremony. Laura Cox knew I was there and came down, took her picture with me, and congratulated all of us. So thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. We have an article with a little more information on the front page of our website, too. It gives you more details.
This is yet another reason why so many of us, and probably everyone in this room, has chosen to send their kids to Lavonia Public Schools, because beyond the core, basic academics, we have such excellent extracurriculars and elective courses and things like this where our kids can really excel. It's really exciting. I might add also, so that you folks don't think they're gonna be stuck here for hours on end, we will be taking a break after Item 3C, after our robotics team presentation, in order for the Board members to congratulate those who are receiving honors tonight and for audience members to do the same. We'll take a five or 10-minute break at that point, and if you'd like to excuse yourself ahead of that, you may. And if you'd like to hang around for a few more hours of Board business, you're, we're very welcome to do that, too. The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, LPS Education Foundation Annual Update.
Okay. Mrs. Jenkins? Thank you, President Burton. One of the really fun parts of my job in the Communications Office is to travel around the district. I always have my camera in hand with a group of outstanding people from the LPS Education Foundation. I'm there, I travel along to document and usually catch someone on the verge of tears when they come to present the generous offerings of the classroom grants every year from the LPS Education Foundation. The teachers who have received these grants are always so thrilled, as you can imagine. But the best part is knowing that the Education Foundation doesn't stop there. Its work keeps giving throughout the year. Here to offer an update on all that the LPS Education Foundation is doing, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Diane Paliselli, who is the LPS Education Foundation's president. As she's joining me at the podium here. Mrs. Paliselli joined the LPS Education Foundation Board of Directors in 2008 and has worked as the nonprofit organization's primary fundraiser for corporate donations, among many other duties. Trust me, that is not all she does. Here to offer the Board and the community an update on all of the exciting things happening with the Foundation, we welcome Mrs. Diane Paliselli.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, President Burton, Board members, and Dr. Leepa. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present the many accomplishments of Lavonia Public Schools' Education Foundation over the past year. It's my privilege to represent the Foundation tonight, to talk about our programs and how proud we really are to serve Lavonia Public Schools. And I'd like to begin by telling you about the latest news about our grant program. As you know, the grant program is in its second year. It was developed because the Foundation wanted to do something immediate and visibly financial to support the classrooms. We wanted to help teachers, we wanted to help them in their important work, we wanted to empower teachers and principals. We wanted to do something to provide resources that would make a difference. The Foundation has a grant committee to oversee the program, and I would like to introduce and thank some of the members who are here tonight. First, our grant chairperson, Mrs. Lorna Durand. If you would kindly stand, Mrs. Durand. Lorna is well-known in the LPS community. She served Lavonia Public Schools for 37 years as a teacher, a principal, and the Director of Student Services. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to recognize Bev Bidlowski. If you would kindly stand, Bev. Bev served in the education field for 31 years, most of that right here in Lavonia Public Schools. Bev worked as a teacher, a coordinator of academic advising, and an early elementary assistance provider. Thank you, Bev. And I would like to introduce Lynn O'Neill, also someone well-known within the LPS community. Lynn worked in our district for 40 years as a teacher, a reading recovery specialist, and a learning specialist. Thank you very much, Lynn. These women have dedicated their careers toward the betterment of education here in our community, and their commitment continues into retirement. Together, they administer the grant program with a strict set of guidelines and criteria. So personally, on behalf of the Foundation, I'd like to thank you for your enthusiastic commitment to the grant program. You are to be commended for the service you continue to provide to the Foundation and Lavonia Public Schools. Thank you again. This year, we were excited to see a great response to our grant program. We had 40 applications totaling over $100,000 in requested funds. We were able to provide 20 grants totaling $36,000, with funding provided through the generous donations made by the LPS employees and a sizable donation from the Foundation. Other organizations in the community made donations as well, and they include the Lavonia Rotary Club, Comcast, Bright House Networks, Community Financial Credit Union, the Kiwanis Club of Lavonia, and of course, the LPS employees. It's really amazing in how creative our teachers are. And here are a couple of examples of the grants that we were able to provide. The first one, being at Cass Elementary School, they were awarded $3,000 for a literary intervention tool. The tool is used in grades 1 through 3 to support students who struggle with reading, and it's an intervention program that helps students reach a level of reading that meets the grade expectations. The second example was at Riley Upper Elementary School to the Library Media Center. We awarded $4,500. And with this, they purchased 15 Chromebooks to help students with their research process, as well as improved searching capabilities using Google applications in the library. The Foundation is committed to supporting the program again this fall. Another significant program offered by the Foundation, and I like to call this one the premier program, is the Competitive Edge College Savings Program, and it continues to be a great success. The Foundation offers to set up 529 educational trust savings accounts for parents of kindergarten students who choose to participate. We initially deposit $100, and the Foundation adds to that each year as our budgets allow. We believe the benefits are, we attract families to the community. This is one more reason for parents to consider moving to Lavonia and enrolling their students in Lavonia Public Schools. And also, we help families to start saving early and providing them with college savings tips that they can use not only for college, but for trade schools. I'm proud to say, we have 1,440 students enrolled in the program. And what that means specifically is that the Foundation has set up a 529 educational trust account for each of those students. We have funded the program, and we continue to add to their accounts as our budgets allow. This past fall, we reached an all-time high in enrollment by signing up 370 new kindergarten students in the program. Both the Competitive Edge program and the grant programs are made possible through the generosity of the LPS employees, the retirees, the PTAs, the PTSAs, our founding partners, our corporate donors, and individuals in the community. This year, the Foundation placed renewed emphasis on marketing the brand of the Foundation, and we did this in a couple of ways. First, we began by developing a high-quality marketing packet. This contains our mission, our programs, and choices for those who are interested in getting involved. This is something we are very proud of. I brought one along tonight, so you can see what it looks like. And on the front, it says "The Right Course," and there's some navigating tools shown here on the front. And then inside, we have pictures of some of the Foundation's events, our students, and then information about the programs and how to get involved over on the side. We use these packets whenever we meet with organizations who wish to support us. The second initiative we took to promote the Foundation's brand involved a partnership that we established with the graphics design class at Lavonia's Career and Technical Center. We asked students to take on a class project, and the goal was to create a new brochure which would describe the Foundation's mission and programs. The students worked under the direction of their teacher, Messina Ormsby, and for several weeks, they put their creativity to work for us. The result, I have a beautiful new brochure that I'd like to show you. It's a fold-out. This is something the students did themselves. It describes what the Foundation does, what programs we offer, and how people can get involved. This is a wonderful project, the students were very enthusiastic about. It's something that they can market as well, they can put this in their professional portfolios. And what the Foundation is planning to do is to show these brochures throughout the community, through businesses, and get the word out about the good work that the Foundation Last year, I told you that the Foundation created an honorary Board of Directors. This is a group separate from the Operating Board. The Operating Board manages the day-to-day business of the Foundation. The Honorary Board consists of 27 leaders in our community. They are prominent leaders who are already involved in supporting the Foundation's mission and the district's vision for Lavonia Public Schools. They actually serve as ambassadors for the Foundation's mission and programs. They outwardly show the community that they are committed to the good work that the Foundation does. They have allowed us to use their names as endorsers of the Foundation and to help us market what we do. In fact, just last week, we had the annual meeting of the Honorary Board of Directors, where we gave them an update on the good work and great progress the Foundation has made over the last year. And I can tell you, they are very excited and energized about what we do. They are a prestigious group of civic leaders who are proud to be involved with the Foundation, and they give the Foundation a huge boost. So now you're wondering, what's next? Well, coming up is the Foundation and LPS Bounce Back to School Party. It will be held on August 25th at Stevenson High School. It's a fun event for students and parents to celebrate the return to college, I'm sorry, to school in the fall. And that's going a little too fast. And all of the proceeds benefit the Competitive Edge College Savings Program. Also, the Foundation's annual luncheon will be held later in the fall, and that event also benefits the Competitive Edge program. And you can find what we do and what we're planning to do on the Foundation's website, which is lpsfoundation.org. To conclude my update tonight, I'd like to thank our Superintendent, Dr. Leepa. As you know, the Foundation was created by his vision, and his commitment has continued, and he serves as a non-voting member of the Foundation Board. We appreciate your involvement and your enthusiasm and your commitment. Thank you, Dr. Leepa. I'd also like to thank President Burton. She is also a non-voting member of the Foundation Board. We thank you for your support very much as well.
You're very welcome.
And I would like to thank Mrs. Wozniak, another non-voting Board member. Mrs. Wozniak gives her heart and soul to the work that we do, and she has donated countless hours in support of our program. Thank you, Mrs. Wozniak. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Jarvis serves as a non-voting member of our Board, and she is an integral part of the many projects and successes that the Foundation takes on. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Johnson? As a prior Foundation Board member, I'd like to thank you as you continue to be our advocate and to support our programs. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'd like to thank the entire Board for the support that you give us and the encouragement that you give us. Thank you all very much. All of this is made possible through the commitment of our community, our donors and our volunteers, and the support of all of you. I'd like to especially thank the Directors of the Operating Board. There's 13 volunteers on this Board who work very hard, day in and day out, to support the programs, because we are all committed to supporting Lavonia Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Paliselli. Mrs. Jenkins, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
No, you don't, already.
I'm just waiting for my next item.
Thank you again. Oh, you'll be up next, don't go far. On behalf of the Board, thank you so much for all that you do individually and that the LPS Foundation does collectively for our district. It is an amazing organization that did not exist just a handful of years ago, but what you give for the immediate classroom benefit and then the long-term good for our students is truly amazing. Thank you.
Mrs. Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
I'm gonna put in a plug, because I've been involved in the LPS Foundation, and I've been involved in presenting the 529 Plan at the schools. And one of the things that we've had difficulty with, and for all of those out there who might be watching or listening that are gonna have kindergarteners next year, the money that's deposited for the student is free money. I can't say that strongly enough. There are no strings attached. This money goes directly into the account. You don't have to do anything except have your student in school. That's all you need. So all of those who have kindergarteners coming in, step up next year, get into the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next item on our agenda is Item 3C, Gifts to Lavonia Public Schools' First Robotics Team. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that to Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District, accept the following generous monetary and in-kind donations. Lavonia Public Schools' First Robotics Team. $5,000 from Densco International America, Lavonia Public Schools. Line Armor and Engineering. Aspen Technical Center of America. $3,000 from Cebic BAE Systems, Comcast, BASF, and Ford. $1,000 from RCO Technologies, HM White, Promotional Concepts, and Alro Steel. $500 from NYX Industries, Kiwanis Club of Michigan, 4M Industries, Duckwork &amp; Associates, L.I. Ray Media, and Lauchan Productions.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Mrs. Jenkins, you're back on.
Thank you, President Burton. As we all know, learning, synergy, innovation, and teamwork do not only happen inside of a classroom. For an ever-growing group of LPS students, all of these things and so much more occur on a full-scale practice space at the Dickinson Center and on the competition floors in the world of First Robotics. Led by Holmes Middle School teacher Isalina Carlini, the Lavonia Warriors is comprised of high school students from Churchill, Franklin, and Stevenson. Together, they design, build, and program a robot to compete in the annual First Robotics Challenge. This year's challenge was called "The Recycling Rush." I was able to witness this challenge during the regional competition held at Churchill. And if you've never seen one of these competitions held at Churchill, it is something definitely to add to your LPS bucket list, if you will. It is a very, very cool thing. Tonight, we are here not only to highlight our very own Lavonia Warriors, but also to publicly thank all of the wonderful mentors and corporate donors that were, that make this amazing program possible. As stated in the motion, each has contributed greatly to the success of this program. Before we publicly thank the many sponsors, though, I'd like to show a three-minute video, which of course was produced by a student, Mr. Patrick Lawton, who is a senior at Franklin High School. And Patrick is going to be my AV assistant here. As you'll see, the video captures the essence of the Lavonia Warriors far better than I ever could.
We're gonna have to start the projector, so just give me a last second. Turn the lights on.
Yeah, let me grab the lights.
Sorry for anybody who's sitting back there, but I hope you enjoy the video. Programming is something now that's usually, you go to college, you get a degree, and then you go and find somewhere where you can program. Lavonia Warriors really provided me with the opportunity to do what I love and have it actually be used. I've seen a lot of new kids do a lot of new things, and they were just this mousy little kid when they first started.
... they come from, you know, Iceland and Denso.
Our children don't listen to us, but these kids do!
Hey, we should buy a brain, last year's robot, to our shop.
It's been a long way of experience watching all, watching these guys put this thing together.
Building a robot in six weeks with inexperienced people, I mean, it's just so amazing.
Hey, we should buy a brain, last year's robot, to our shop.
It's been a long way of experience watching all, watching these guys put this thing together.
Building a robot in six weeks with inexperienced people, I mean, it's just so amazing.
My first one year, we backed it up, not working.
Every year, we improve more and more.
Then last year, we ended up, week four, it was done, everyone could test it, and it was great.
We almost doubled the size of the team.
Eight to 10 hours of community service. They need to do volunteering.
You know, nothing's ever gonna be perfect the first time you do it.
It's really awesome to be able to watch the students actually make the robot go because it's their code.
Nothing looks like it came out of the factory.
It was led to a flip-flop by the students.
We're definitely student-led.
Every person that joins the team has a purpose and a spot.
A whole squad dedicated to going to middle schools, going to the library.
And we've started a farm team down at Holmes. We went to the Anarba Pianza Museum.
We were asked to actually participate in the kickoff, so we were able to help hundreds of teams in the area.
We always bring in rookies.
We finally won an entire competition. That's never happened before.
Every year, we write down what worked, what didn't work. And we actually challenge.
Face.
The failure of their ideas.
We want to learn how to see these problems before they happen.
Last season, we had a big issue with communication and cooperating.
This year, Noah, like, he designed the electrical board, and so he was in tight communication with the electrical team.
All the parts come together to form a cohesive whole.
Seeing how can you use math or science.
It's hard, but, I mean, it's fine, and it's worth it. Yeah.
First robotics in Livonia Public Schools is all about positioning kids for success. Robotics isn't just for geeks, or, it's pretty much, it's a method, a conduit, to be able to produce something really awesome. The team, it's not about the robot, it's about the team, the kids.
Thank you for watching. Sorry about, like, the slight lag there, that was just the wifi. I promise, I rendered it okay. But, so, you saw at the end, just for, like, a little bit of background for anybody not familiar with First, like, it said #Sherman'sAward2015. The Sherman's Award is, like, the biggest award that you could win with robotics, and we didn't win it, but however, everybody on the team was still very happy with what we did, and I was very satisfied, so it was still really fun to do.
Thank you, Patrick. Very well done. Okay, and now I'd like to invite Ms. Carlini to the podium with me, and we are going to do some certificates of appreciation. Also, I'd like to point out, if, sorry those at home, you can't see this, but in the corner, we've got this odd-looking, green-glowing contraption, if you will. It's actually the robot for this school year, and her name is Jort. And Jort stands for Nordic God of Mother Earth, which ties in nicely with the, for this year's First Robotics Challenge, Recycle Rush. So with that, and we do invite everyone to check the, check out Jort, maybe shake her arm at the break. So with that, we can get started with Ms. Carlini. And we're going to, we've invited representatives from each of our donors to join us this evening and receive this certificate, which is just a certificate of appreciation, Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Appreciation. And then it lists the name of the company donating for the Livonia Warriors and today's date, and it's signed by Superintendent Dr. Randy Leepa. Okay, so without further ado, would you like me to, well, I'll read the names and you can present, how about that? Okay, first up, we have Iceland Technical Center of America. There we go. BAE Systems. The Kuanis Club of Livonia. Linear Mold and Engineering. Livonia Public Schools. The LPS Education Foundation, along with Comcast. And a few who were not able to make it. Let's see, we've got NYX Industries, L.I.Ray Media, Forum Industries, and Promotional Concepts. Okay, and with that, Ms. Carlini would like to offer a real quick, one-minute update on how the season went for the team this year. Okay?
I gave up most of my time for the video because it was so great. Wasn't it great? It really was great. That was a completely student work, and we are so incredibly proud of it. At this time, I'd like to go over the, or tell you a little bit about the four awards that we won this year. Usually, I stand up here and give you a play-to-play about all of our competitions. I'm not gonna even tell you where we went this year. We were all over the place, we did great things on-season and off-season, but during the regional competitions this year, our team won two imagery awards at the region level, which not only represent a beautiful robot that is designed and has a beautiful appearance, but also an awesome appearance and consistency among the team with the idea of imagery. So at this time, I would like to ask our lead student artist, who came up with the concept and the design of the Jort robot's face, and that student is out of Franklin High School, Lotus Sterry, would you stand, please?
There she is.
I'd also like, I'd also like her entire team, the communications and imagery team, including mentors, to stand. In addition to taking that imagery award in Woodhaven and at Livonia, our team also took the UL Safety Award. The UL Safety Award is an extremely coveted industrial safety award, and it's really something the Warriors have been chasing for probably about six years now. And our safety captain is really responsible for steering the team in that direction. She is a senior, she's graduating this year, and her name is Maria Cassar. Maria, would you stand, please? I'd also like Maria's safety team to stand, all those students involved with safety. And these same students are responsible for receiving the Safety Hard Hat Award. Safety Hard Hat Award actually is the safety award that the Livonia Warriors have won every year for the last seven years, because it's the first runner-up award for the industrial UL Safety Award, the big regional award. So we took that award as well this season, but it was, the ship came in with that UL Safety Award. So our team had a great season, and I'm not gonna take much more time, but if I could have all of the Livonia Warriors, all of the parents involved, all of the mentors involved, and all of the sponsors involved, stand just for one moment. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments by board members? It is absolutely amazing. I had the privilege this year of attending the main competition that was held at Churchill High School for the first time, and I was late to everything else I had to do that morning because I stayed for so long. It was so amazing. It is truly something to take a half an hour or an hour, if you can, on the day of their competitions, and go around and watch the teams at work. It is, it is, it's, I can only liken it to my students, my own kids who are heavily involved in athletics, it's like a state playoff. It is amazing. But it's absolutely a team effort, and the engineering and design minds that go into it are truly a gift that you folks should be very proud of. I also heard from several of the companies that were there, that they said, "We're here helping, but we're also here looking for future recruiting," because these are the people that we want to hire when they get out of college. So it's an activity your kids can participate in in high school or middle school, but it certainly does pay off. The other thanks I'd like to give is to the sponsoring companies. It's, it is, and I use the word "easy" very lightly, it's easier, I'll let me put it, to write a check and send it in. What I was amazed at is the number of folks in all of these companies that actually took their time out of their workday and came in and worked with our students on an ongoing basis to teach them how to do this and to encourage them and watch them excel. That, the gift of money is very, very important. The gift of time carries on where no check can go. So thank you so much to all of you for everything that you've given to the Livonia Robotics Any other comments by board members? All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald and Mrs. Bonnefield. Will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes, President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this point, we will take a brief five-to-ten-minute recess, so those of us in attendance tonight can congratulate the many, many participants, and we will rejoin in about five to 10 minutes or so.
I really appreciate it. We give rose to it.
Thanks.
Thanks.[1446.33]
Thank you. You can be my card.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. We give you a rose to it.
Thanks.
Welcome back after our brief recess, so we could congratulate some of our award recipients and those who are being recognized this evening. Continuation of our May 18th regular Board of Education meeting. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D: Written Communications. Does any board member have written communications that they would like to share with the board? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Item 3E: Audience Communications. Audience communications is a portion of our meeting where we, the board is prepared to listen to comments from the community. We do have a three-minute time limit on communications to the board. It is not a question-and-answer session. The reason for that is the board may or may not have complete, incomplete, or any information, or any degree in-between, depending on who you're talking to. So it is a time for the board members to listen to the community, and if need be, we will ask administration to get back with you to follow up on a situation, but it is time for us to listen to you folks. We will ask everyone to hold to their three-minute limit so that we can be fair to everybody who is requesting to address the board this evening. If you are wishing to address the board and you have not yet filled out a blue slip, if you could please do so and hand it to me so I can make sure that I do have an opportunity to call on it, to call on each person? Thank you. Alrighty, the first person with, that would like to address the board is Kiran Bledsoe. Good evening, Kiran.
Hello.
Hello.
I am not an adult, as you can probably tell. I currently go to Churchill High School, and I am in Kappa, and I am enjoying my time. And before I continue on, I would like to say to all of the mothers in the room, I hope you all enjoyed your Mother's Day, and to all of the fathers in the room, I hope you enjoy your Father's Day. Continuing on to that, the topic that I wanted to bring up was one that is very important to me as a son and someday as a future father and to have a future mother by my side. One of, also relation to education, which is family leave for teachers, whether it's for only mothers or for full families. Either way, I am not completely aware of how far the legislation may go towards that and what guidelines there are. But I am aware that it's not perfect because my German teacher recently went, left having a child, and we had a conver, there was a conversation in class, and the topic came up of how she doesn't get a, she doesn't, even though she's having a child and she can't really, you know, can't control that, she, the time off that she has to take is not paid. And that seems like a thing that doesn't work with me because I feel like if you're a mother or a father and you have a newborn child that you're about to raise and you need to take time off, I feel like there should be the ability to, you know, raise that child without being punished by the fact that you just can't work and can't get paid for that. So I was just maybe wondering if anyone has any information on what the current status of that legislation is, or maybe if there's any progress being made towards furthering maybe the ability for paid leave or at least extending unpaid leave.
Thank you very much. Dr. Leva?
Yes, we will make sure to provide to you some background information on the benefits that staff do have, just so you have that background and knowledge. So we appreciate you coming tonight and speaking. Did a nice job, and we'll make sure to provide that information to you. There are both paid-in unpaid leaves for employees of Livonia Public Schools. We'll make sure to get that to you.
Thank you, Kiran. The next blue slip that I have is from Amber Middleton.
Hello. I have my, my document in my phone, so I'll be reading from this, so I apologize in advance for the lack of eye contact while I'm speaking. Okay, I did time this, so hopefully I st-
Alrighty.
Okay. I'm confident that I can assume we are all here for the same reason, which is the overall vested interest in Livonia Public School District. Obviously, everyone here shares the same goal, but with different agendas, and that is the district, students, teachers, staff, and parents within the district. What is in everyone's best interest, that is the bottom line. I'm here for the same reason. I was a previous LPS student myself, and now my daughter's enrolled in one of next year's general ed kindergarten classes, and my son will soon be after her. I am genuinely concerned that the LPS Board of Education is making a mistake in possibly closing Perrinville Early Childhood Education Center. I feel that dispersing the program throughout the district would be regressing instead of progressing for the special needs of children and special ed community as a whole. I feel this decision would be one giant footstep back. We should be moving forward, not backward. I view the adaptive program that Perrinville offers as definitely one of the things that sets Livonia District apart from the rest amongst all the other amazing programs that we offer. I say "we" because I'm a community member and a parent, so. Every child deserves the best possible tools available to build up their confidence as well as future scholastic aptitudes. So Perrinville offers this to these children. Every child is an investment for the future of the world. So the situation with this impending closure is far greater than just this year or just this building. As a reminder, Perrinville is a one-stop shop that fosters the ASD, GSRP, Head Start, ECP, talk it up, and I may be missing something, but you guys get the point, I'm sure you're aware. They foster many programs in one building and still yield results. Great results, as far as I'm concerned. My child is just one example of that. She started a speech and language in January this year, and is now going to a general ed kindergarten, which I can confidently accredit to the school and staff at Perrinville. I just recently, this past weekend, had four different family members say, "Wow, she's really talking a lot and clearly, that's amazing." And I was like, "Yeah, the school she's going to is pretty awesome." So I believe Perrinville is a school to be modeled after. All districts should offer these programs, like every single district in the state. Countrywide would be even better, but, you know, one thing at a time. So it's all housed under one roof and one tight-knit community for the three- to five-year-olds at Perrinville. So, and Perrinville reinforces trust and safety to each child and parent that steps foot through those doors. So everyone is different, and sometimes we learn differently than others. Some of us need different adaptive equipment, or especially trained teachers and aides to be the best to, to help us be the best version of us that we can be, is what I'm trying to say. Sorry. Now, my main concern is that Perrinville is on the chopping block due to the outlook of the revenue of the current and future fiscal years. My concern is that the quality of life Perrinville offers to their students with specific special needs between the ages of three and five will be being revoked. I understand that they are being dispersed amongst the K-4 buildings, not discontinued, but the emotional ramifications of this act and the impact it could have on these children, their parents, and even staff is reason enough to reconsider and find another way. As it has been stated by the school ward-
Mrs. Milton, excuse me, if you could wrap up your comments, that would be great. Thank you.
As stated by the school board, the LPS is losing 300 students per year from the district. My suggestion is to offer more out-of-school district enrollments to increase revenue and continue giving a positive association with the district. I urge you to at least keep Perrinville open for one more school year. I urge you, allow the Perrinville parents, staff, and community as a whole to come together to try to make a change, not just for this one school, but for the entire district. We need more time to flood the senators' offices and state legislators, requesting more funding and grant submittal. That equals more time for fundraising as well. There's also a petition against the closure with over 2,224 signatures as of like 6:15 earlier today already, so this could change everything. Please, when considering your vote this coming June, at least consider an extension, just to figure out an alternative option. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next blue slip that I have is from Jennifer Higgins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm, also wanted to talk about Perrinville. My son is a former student at Perrinville, and I just wanted to share a story, one little story about his time at Perrinville. He went in as, he didn't speak. He only had a few words, he talked in a script. He went to a speech class. He was there for two years. It came out that he had ASD. That school was his home for two years. He rode the bus every day. I didn't go in often. I was always welcome there, but I wasn't there a lot. Took him cupcakes for his birthday. So him and I went in, and we were sitting at the bench, waiting for him to go into his classroom. A woman walks by, "Good morning Frankie, how are you?" And he said something completely inappropriate to what she was saying to him. He talked off a script at that time. And she stopped, got down on his level, "No Frankie, do you remember, this is what we say when somebody asks, says good morning to you, how are you?" Had him repeat it back to him. And I said, "I've never seen you before. Who are you? Are you in his classroom?" I'd met his parents before, I didn't recognize this woman. She said, "No, my classroom's down the hall. I just see him every morning, and we do this every day, just so he learns." That's what that school is. It, every single teacher knows all the different kids there. They can stop at a moment's notice and help this, whatever student, wherever the student is, get it together, say the right thing. They teach them not just in the classroom, in the hallways, at snack time, on the playground. It is a home for these kids. And now, remember, you're talking about the smallest of the kids that are in this school district, the tiny little ones. Some of them would be terrified to go to a K-4 school. Some of these fourth graders, I teach, he is a second grader now at Coolidge Elementary. He's in a mainstream classroom, he's doing fantastic. I got a great report from him today. He actually sat through an assembly with loud noises. He got all that from Perrinville. His resource room teacher was thrilled. I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. He's, he's doing great, and it's all because of Perrinville. I can, could not see him as a tiny three-year-old going to a K-4 where some of those fourth graders are my size and be able to be as comfortable as he was at Perrinville to be able to learn. Please find another way, find another building. This school has to stay open. It does so much for these kids, truly. They need a home where they can be themselves and learn as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. My next blue slip is from Brad Higgins. I knew you were up. That's okay.
Yeah, my wife made a good, personal point, they were talking about our son. But like she said, our son doesn't go any there anymore. But going forward, all the other parents, what they did for us, what they can do for parents going forward is invaluable. I do real estate for a living, and a lot of people move this district just for Perrinville. I just wanted to say that they do a great job, and there should be a home where they have for a couple of years where they can get adjusted and get ready for school, and he's done so well there. That's all I just wanted to say. My wife did a good job. Thanks.
Thank you. We did have a number of folks who were speaking on Perrinville this evening. For those of you who may not be aware, the Perrinville folks probably are, but the Board of Education was invited to come into Perrinville and have a meeting with parents. We used to meet with, with parents and staff in a very large group last week, and we thank everyone for coming out and sharing a lot of very thoughtful stories, suggestions, opportunities, things, you know, "Hey, did you look at this? Did you look at that?" And wanted to let you know that those suggestions are being taken very seriously, which is why their final decisions are not made at this point, but those are being investigated to see what, what is feasible and what is the best thing that we can do, given the financial situation that, that we unfortunately are all facing. So thank you very much to the Perrinville community for coming out and sharing those thoughts. Our next blue slip is John Grisbeck.
the students, and also the staff, and all stakeholders there. I know it's, and I'm not speaking for any of my groups that I am associated with, like BTA or whatever, and I'm also not going to take a stand this evening in a personal way. I don't think it's prudent to do that because I don't have all the facts in front of me. I think it's very important to point out that a decision hasn't been made, and we're still looking for dialogue within the community. And I understand that there's a lot of difficult decisions before you, before your table this evening, and in future evenings, and for the years to come. It's important that our community does talk to our legislators. It's very important that they do that, because these difficult decisions are because of a lack of funding before public education. And it's nothing that Levonia Public Schools has brought on themselves. And it's also important that we build up our fund equity. That is something I've talked about for about 10 years now, and we need to do that. But it's difficult because, again, the funding. And please contact your legislators. I'm also going to say one other thing, actually, two things. I really hope that this board builds the trust and talks to each other and communicates the code of ethics. It's very important that that happens. We need to do so. You need to do so. And also, the MASB classes that most of you took, six of you, I believe, are just about ready to continue that, or finish that, if you haven't already done so. I apologize. I know many of you have. Some of you are newly elected board members, and you're working towards that goal. Please, finish that. We need to be on our board. It's been some time since we've been that, and there's only about one or two of you in the past that have, haven't finished that. And I really hope that that is something that you work towards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last blue slip that I have is from Jeff and Jody White.
I have 980 words. I'm going to try to talk fast, but I'm going to set my timer to so I can kind of. 63,321 votes came in at the 2014 school board election to elect three neighbors out of a total of nine candidates to represent our educational institution here in Levonia. I am proud and honored to have casted a vote for all three of you, Johnson and Ms. Burton, and I know you from the PTSA, and I appreciate you getting to let us know you, as well as Mr. Centers, which I met at a budget meeting. As a civic-minded person trusting and representative government and believing that we have public policy and rules for a reason, I'm coming back to you today, Ms. Burton. Morally frustrated yet excited to know that I can expect a final answer from you, our president, about our current leadership and how they handled a structure of a complaint from December 2014, hopefully within 10 days. Remembering civics class from high school, our school board members are elected trustees of the public school institution. As they contribute to oversee, as they contribute to oversee and balance school operations through the democratic process, they are also required to govern the district, allowing the superintendent to run it. As our elected neighbors, the seven of you are working for the best interests of all the students and citizens, and I want to thank you for serving. But I'm publicly asking today for Dr. Leopold, what he did for my family after last month when President Burton asked him to investigate our December 10th complaint given to Assistant Principal Lyndon Lewis and Principal Keith McDonald that led to a Levonia police report. Yes, here in Levonia. Three senior students from Churchill stalked, harassed, and assaulted our 9th grade son after a 9th grade girl was offended that her one inappropriate text was blocked and ignored by him. The lack of immediate follow-through and lost incident reports had the head of security, John Raymond, immediately involved. Mrs. Laura, who is not here today, is a retired elementary principal and former teacher, and she understands the importance of a chain of command as well as a well-written administrative policy to help parents in time like this. The continued lack of immediate follow-through and lack of any consequences for the two perpetrators and the Coulter family could be why we are in need of you to research the Churchill incident today and render your decision favorable for our son. For Ms. Laura, who's not here, I am thankful that she has full knowledge and understanding as an elected official back in 1999, when we had the most understanding of the clear roles and responsibility of our leadership and public policy for governing, violation of school rules are definitely needed. The police liaison officer, Andrew Hess, with the help of Principal Keith McDonald and the now-retiring Assistant Principal Marsha Byrd, were able to place our minor son into the Wayne County Court District Court by helping Mary Catherine Coulter and the Plymouth attorney Penny Parker with false allegations. The court transcripts from January 20th have been given to you, the board, the board upstairs with Dana Winery and Stephen Archibald, the Churchill principal McDonald, as well as the mayor, the legal staff, and the City of Levonia Police Department. Today, currently, well, this month, Investigator McPhee is currently offering to help our family with the gender-biased police report, but we will need help from the board. The current board member, Mark Johnson, who had almost 10K votes, spoke during the 2014 campaign for reelection. We are the face of the school district and must be the biggest cheerleaders while also being the biggest watchdog. I look forward to your comments today as an active attorney and watchdog. You know how false PPOs on the male gender is a current problem in today's culture and causing a strain on the Wayne County legal system.
Excuse me, Mrs. White, if you could wrap up your-
I will. And, okay, Suzanne, who was the first runner-up in the 2014 election, had almost 8K votes. She was quoted saying, "A board member should ethically and efficiently serve the public by providing a framework for staff and administration. A school board member should be informed, inquisitive, and principled. We have a 32-page framework in place that was found in the Churchill website that I downloaded, called the suit and handbook, but was called condensating by Mr. McDonald for quoting from it." Paraphrasing from the October 24th Observer newspaper, Mrs. Burton, "You have a proven history of transparency leadership. You care deeply about the district. You're effective. You've carried out your role as a board member by heading up the review of the 680-page policy, evaluating one of our best superintendents in the state. I'm thankful for your knowledge and understanding of this administrative rulebook, as you have the power to help a parent that can see-"
Excuse me, Mrs. White.
Okay.
I'm very sorry, but we try to be fair to everyone and hold everyone to three minutes.
Can I concede my time then to her?
I'm sorry. I cannot do that.
All right. She is thankful for the knowledge and understanding of this administration-
Excuse me, Mr. White, just so that the public is clear, I have a blue slip that says Jeff and Jody White. So, what I'm going to do is give you, Mr. White, three minutes, since your name is on this blue slip.
All right. I'm going to read on from what she has, because it doesn't seem like there's much left into this. Mrs. Burton, you had over 15K votes that led the school board to rewriting the policy. You said the policy actually obligates board members to educate themselves about issues, to express their differences of opinion at the board table while letting the president speak for the board. I'm ready to hear from the Levonia Superintendent tonight. We would appreciate the paraphrase you again as your role as president today. An effective board member should also possess a thorough knowledge of the district and the effective communicator with the community about the administration and the staff. You want me to read this in regards to Stevenson's coach? "As a Stevenson coach and a Career Center teacher are being internally investigated, I am hoping that school board will see the value to put our situation as a top priority to internally investigate the superintendent and how it did. The redacted police report and the continued legal threat from the attorney Penny Parker and her client, Mrs. Coulter, towards our family, the White family. All I can say is that no freshman who is in this school district should ever have to experience what I did at Churchill High School, especially when ample time and energy has gone into the public policy for us parents and taxpayers. Being bullied stinks, and being bullied by administrators and directors of the school district stinks even more." She's leaving. And that's her words.
Thank you.
I have a lot of concern with that, and I do echo that conversation, too.
Thank you. If I may make one factual correction, it was stated that I asked the superintendent to investigate the situation.
Correct.
What I stated was that the superintendent was following up on the situation, and I asked that he would continue to follow up and do so. I did not ask him to investigate the situation, but rather to follow up. Thank you very much.
We did have a meeting, and there was not a great outcome, only to Mr. Archibald and Mr. Leopold's position on it, as they felt the administration did their job. And I really didn't see what part of the job or where they heard, what part of it they heard from. Did they hear from Mr. Raymond? Did they hear from Mr. Winery? I didn't hear their explanation to it. I was trying to get a redacted names, and that's what the Levonia mayor asked us for, to come to you guys for these names. I mean, these children are sitting out there, and there's quite a threat there to my young man. And I'm here speaking on behalf of my son. Good night.
Thank you. I have no further blue slips. The next item on our agenda is Item 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communications. At our last month's meeting, there were two requests that administration follow up with, and the board asked that the administration follow up with those requests, and those meetings have taken place at this time. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of April 20th, 2015. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of May 11th, 2015. 5C, minutes of the closed sessions of May 11th, 2015. 5D, approval of the 2015-2016 cooperative education program agreements. And 7A, bills for payment, May 19th, 2015.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6A, under Instruction Matters, 6A, Approval of Agreement with Graduation Alliance. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. McDonald.
A little slow here.
That's okay. Thick book tonight.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District accept the bid recommendation for hard floor care equipment from HP Products.
Excuse me, we're backed up one section.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're looking at Section 6, Item A.
I apologize to him. I-
Not a problem.
Mrs. Burton, can I step in and help?
Yes, you may go right ahead.
Sorry. I've gotten help before, so.
That's all right. Mrs. Bonfield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District approve the agreement with Guardian Alliance to provide a dropout recovery program with, beginning with the 2015-16 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mr. Johnson. I would make one correction. It's Graduation Alliance. That's okay. Not a problem. Let me see here. We will be hearing from Mr. Archibald on this item. Mr. Archibald.
Thank you, President Burton. Again, the Graduation Alliance provides partnering opportunity with the district. It is a dropout recovery program that provides the opportunity to locate, reengage, and ultimately graduate former dropouts or other at-risk students. This is a program that has no upfront cost to the district. LPS does receive the foundation allowance in a prorated fashion, and then is able to use those monies received to pay the cost of the program. And again, I'd request a motion to approve the agreement.
Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mr. Centers.
For those of you who have not watched our committee the whole meeting, this is a nice alternative for students who, right now, in our district, do not have a lot of options as far as credit recovery go. This is going to be a benefit to students, and it's also a benefit to the district. So, it's, students who may not have another, a lot of options, here's another option for them. It's been used in Oakland County and had some success, so we're excited to try it out here.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald.
I would like to thank Mr. Archibald for his hard work and dedication in getting this put together. Thank you so much. I know, I know I had discussions with some of the assistant principals over at Stevenson, and this is much needed. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by board members? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. Mr. Archibald, some of the, I went through the agreement that we have, and it indicates that within five days of signing the agreement, we have to give them a list of those students who are eligible. Is that a problem, or do we have that information presently?
We don't currently, but we have a meeting set up with them with Graduation Alliance next week, and a team of folks from the district to begin the implementation process.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments by board members? Alrighty. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6B, Recommend Upholding Hearing Officer's Decision for Long-Term Suspension of One Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District uphold the hearing officer's decision for long-term suspension of one Franklin High School student, grade 9, for serious violations of Levonia Public Schools Board of Education policies. Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 6C, Recommend Expulsion of One Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
It's me.
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonfield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District expel one Stevenson High School student, grade 9, for serious violations of Levonia Public Schools Board of Education policies.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Approval of Bid Results for Floor Care Equipment. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District accept the bid recommendation for hard floor care equipment from HP Products Belleville, Michigan, for a total amount of $58,050.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Addy, would you like to address this item?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. We are bringing forward this evening bid results to replace six outdated pieces of equipment that are used to clean our hard floors. These will be placed in the secondary schools, if approved, and the equipment that's currently in the secondary schools will move down to our lower grades. As always, we always make the best use of all of our equipment, replace one, and get rid of the worst, and just keep pushing them down. This purchase this evening would be part of the 2013 bond. As you know, we set aside funds from that bond for the replacement of outdated equipment for both our maintenance and custodial equipment, and this is within the budget we set aside for the 2013 series bond. We did put out a competitive bid and received six vendor responses. We had an opportunity to review those in detail at our finance committee meeting, and as you know, we are recommending the low bidder, who met all of the specifications, HP Products, for a total cost for the six pieces of equipment of $58,050, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Addy, just to refresh my memory, Aunt Moran Crasso isn't taking care of any of our equipment rental-
Correct.
-equipment bids, correct?
Correct. We do that internally.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the role, please? Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion by- Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7C, approval of bid results for technology move management for Phase II schools in the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase II technology move management bids for the amount of $60,334 and a contingency budget amount of $12,067, for a total amount of $72,401, and authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate and execute final contract on behalf of Livonia Public Schools School District's Board of Education with Corrigan Moving Systems.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And Ms. Eddy.
Thank you very much. Again, this is an approval regarding the 2013 bond, and we did bring this to the Board of Education two weeks ago at our finance committee meeting. Paul Terio from Plant Moran Cressa was here to go over some of the details, and you've had an opportunity to have that in your package. Basically, what we're asking for this evening is to approve the low bid, there were two bidders, as you recall, Corrigan Moving Systems, and their responsibility this summer will be for the Phase II schools, which are Hayes, Kennedy, Roosevelt, Riley, Emerson, and Franklin. And their responsibilities will be the process of taking the equipment, taking it out of service, packing it up, then Corrigan will move the equipment off-site or in another location, then they will be brought back in when we're ready to get schools started, and hook up the equipment, and make sure it's working properly. So, we have a separate moving company that will handle the other furniture and equipment and items in the building, and this company will strictly be handling the technology piece of the move this summer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions by board members? Mr. Centers.
I just would like to thank you for investigating this and making sure that we have experts handling our very expensive and sensitive equipment, so just going through this process and finding another company that'll fit our needs, I want to thank Ms. Eddy for her diligence.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And one interesting, Lisa, it was interesting to me, the location of the storage, I understand, is going to be in one of our LPS buildings, so we are personally, we have personal oversight and make sure that equipment is secure over the summer while those first buildings are being worked on.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonfield, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item 7D, approval of resolution for Wayne RISA's 2015-2016 General Fund Operating Budget. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution approving the general fund operating budget for the 2015-16 school year for the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, RISA.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Eddy, would you like to address this item?
Thank you. Again, this was an item that we discussed at our finance committee meeting two weeks ago, and the board has had an opportunity to, for a few weeks, to have the Wayne County RISA budget available to you to go through. We did go through it in detail at that meeting, looking at all of the different line items. Generally speaking, I would say this budget is consistent with prior years. There was very little change overall. Wayne RISA is spending down a little bit of their fund balance in their general fund operating budget, almost $1 million this year. This, as you know, for our board to be approving the Wayne County RISA budget is required by law. That, several years ago, that went into effect. So each of the school boards across Wayne County during the month of May will be reviewing the same document, and we ask the board to vote either to approve or to not approve the Wayne County RISA budget. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Eddy, and I don't know if you can even answer this question, or maybe you can look into it, or maybe Dr. Leep again. The special education budget, which has a fund balance of $15 million, how is it determined that those funds are spent, and is it possible for us to possibly get any additional funding to support our special education programs?
I think Dr. Leep wants to answer.
Ah, yes.
Hold the microphone.
It's a great question, actually, because people don't always understand exactly how the countywide programs are funded, and so these are programs for students that have a particular disability that meet countywide specifications to have the service provided by the county as opposed to the local school district. And this is beneficial for all Wayne County students, all Wayne County communities, because we work together for these particular programs, because in some cases, we may only have a few students that are, that fit that disability category, and another school district may only have a few, and another may only have one. So we can work together and provide a strong program for those kids, as opposed to each school district trying to address what are sometimes very significant needs for these students. And so this has been a very efficient way to provide these required services for these students that much deserve the programs, obviously. And in setting it up that way, we know, or we've known over the years, that not all of the dollars collected for the program have been able to cover the cost of the program. And so we actually were in a position back not too long ago, well, actually, it's been a long time ago, it's, time flies. So, but we did go for a countywide special education millage in our county that was approved by county voters, because there wasn't enough money that was being collected to pay for all the programs. And so every school district was getting charged back to their general fund a certain dollar amount, in our case, it was going to be $2 to $3 million coming out of our general fund, because there wasn't enough money to pay for these countywide programs in the dollars that were collected through the special millage. So the millage was increased, and the plan with that millage when it was increased, because it's now at the maximum level, that that would make sure that these particular programs are covered, are covered for as long as they possibly can be covered. And so while there's a fund balance in there right now, the stewards of that money are very careful, because they want to make sure that the programs that are being provided right now will continue to be provided, not just this year, but into years into the future. And so they've got a very detailed game plan to make sure that the services that are provided right now will continue. And they actually have a budget committee that looks at all the different programs and all the different requests that come in. We have to put in requests for our programs, and so Jen Terio and her staff put together budgets, they submit them to the county, and they literally have to go to the county, and they're grilled pretty hard in regards to why we need what we're asking for. And so we go through that process, but it's a very, it's a very careful process that's happened at the county level, because they want to make sure that those funds are there for kids, not just this year, but there for kids five years from now and 10 years from now. So probably a little bit of a long answer, but it was a great question, because while they do have some dollars in there, it's there because they want to make sure the programs are there for kids five years and 10 years down the road. And we're not sitting as a school district saying, oh my gosh, we have this budget problem, and now it's a budget problem that's increased by $2 million, because the county programs, which are required programs, you know, can't run at its certain level, or its existing level. So, very important concept to understand as we're planning for the future, and do want the community to know that we do request funds as we can for our programs, and, but for good reason, there are tight controls on that to make sure that what we're providing today will be able to provide, will be provided again next year and two years and five years down the road. So, long answer, but good question.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson, and Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7E, approval of additional seats for limited schools of choice. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to open a total of 50 additional seats under Section 105(c), which allows for enrollment of out-of-district students under limited schools of choice for the 2015-16 school year. Breakdown for enrollment would be kindergarten, 25 seats, first grade, 10 seats, second, third, and fourth grades, five seats each, 15 seats total, for a total of 50 additional seats. Registration window would be May 19th through June 2nd, 2015. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And we'll be hearing from Dr. Leep and Mrs. Oakley on this item.
Well, as you know, this is, I'll let Andrea cover the details here in a second. As you know, this is a request based on our ongoing examination into finding additional cost-saving and revenue enhancement ideas for our budget next year. And as I've shared with you, this is just one of many ideas that have been, that are being explored, and that will come to the Board of Education. And as we're trying to balance our budget for next year, we know that it's, we believe it's rather essential that we go ahead and exhaust the students that actually applied in our school district for, with the seats that were open, in order to save program for the other 15,000 students in our school district. And so that's why we bring this recommendation forward to you, and while it isn't going to balance our budget for next year, it will help us towards getting to the goal of having a balanced budget for next year. So with that, I'll let Mrs. Oakley talk to you a little bit about the details.
Thank you, Dr. Leep. As you know, we've previously approved 50 seats for limited schools of choice for the 15-16 school year at a prior board meeting. We had 108 students apply, 50 students were selected in the lottery, and we still have 58 students on the waitlist. So we are recommending, the breakdown is, Mr. Johnson read in the motion, to have those seats open, and additional 50 seats open for a total of up to 100 students new from out-of-district for the 15-16 school year, in order to bring additional revenue to the district and preserve programs for our other students. The anticipated revenue to the general fund would be up to $400,000.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by board members? Mr. Centers, and Mrs. McDonald.
I would just like to go back to our community forums and also reference our meetings with Perrinville, and over and over, I'm hearing personally, support for limited schools of choice. People really care about the programs. There's a lot of students that benefit from those programs, and after piloting this last year, response from most people is, oh, we didn't even know there was limited schools of choice. So, based on the community feedback, I'm going to go ahead and support again this year. And I thank you for, Andrea and Dr. Leep, for really doing a nice job of orchestrating this. Once again, very smooth process.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton. I too would like to, go along with Mr. Centers' comments, and we've been told over and over, even again this evening from a Perrinville parent, to accept children on a limited basis. I know personally, sometimes I think it's wrong in reference to, because our neighbors and our surrounding communities are also struggling to maintain their student counts. But I think it's important to know that other folks, children who chose, choose to come here, want to come here for a reason, and it's the educational experience that they receive here at Livonia Public Schools, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I would like to point out the difference between limited and unlimited schools of choice. Mrs. Oakley said, I'm not sure if you want to address this, or if you'd like me to go ahead and comment on that?
I'd be happy to. The law allows, under 105(c), a district to take students from out-of-district to be part of your school district and to gain the foundation allowance, either from their school district or yours, whichever is the lesser amount. If you have an unlimited schools of choice, then you open up the window for enrollment, and then you may continue accepting students in an unlimited number, final number, up through the end of the first week of school, so that would be end of the first week in September. And so that would be an unknown with regard to how many students would come in and have some, certainly some impact on staffing decisions and placement that would need to be made. With limited schools of choice, you're able to identify specific grade levels, programs, or schools. In our case, we are recommending specific grade levels with an amount at each grade level. We feel we're able to maintain control over staffing and placement, so we don't have any adverse impact on the students already entrusted to us that we are servicing, and we're able to plan accordingly for our staff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is something that I do repeat, because it's so very important that the public understand, this is not an open door, come one, come all, and we're going to take as many as we can get, kind of a concept at all. This, rather, is a very small number in our very early grades, for the reasons that Mrs. Oakley stated, and we did it very successfully last year. Mrs. Oakley, we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, but for the benefit of those who may not have tuned in at that meeting, can you explain to folks why we cannot simply go off of the current waitlist that we have?
Sure. The, again, the legislation allows for us to do one of two things. We could either open a new enrollment window and invite the students on the waitlist to apply, and they may or may not get in, depending on how many students there are and whether or not we need a lottery. The other choice would be to wait until the first Monday of the third week of August of that school year to offer spots where there are seats available. And we feel that not only would that be difficult for our staff with regard to making personnel decisions and placement of teachers, we also know that parents are anxious to make these educational decisions for their children, hopefully prior to the summertime, but certainly before that period of time, if at all possible. And so in all likelihood, we would probably gain very few of those students on the waitlist at that late date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, you will be contacting those families who are on the waitlist and letting them know that they are eligible to, or that everyone would be welcome to reapply at this time.
Should the vote be successful this evening, we will start tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. And it's been said, we've used the word "programs" quite a bit tonight, and it fell quite frequently into this conversation. And just so the public is aware, what we're talking about with programs, it may not be a specific special education program, it may not be a specific program for another niche group of students, but it goes as far and wide. The money that we're bringing in right now into our general fund is so that we can do things like keep our class sizes near where they are right now, so we can continue to be the Livonia Public Schools that everyone expects, which is offering art, music, and gym classes, which is offering a variety of elective courses in the high school, which is offering student assistance providers in our middle school and high schools, so that our students who have some specific personal needs can get those addressed, so that they can go on and learn. It's providing, even at a limited basis at this point, learning specialists, ESAT providers for our elementary schools. There are so very many things that makes Livonia Public Schools the kind of district that it is, and when we, we in this room tend to throw the word "programs" around quite a bit, but it's keeping all of those things for our students, and keeping our staff compensated so that their highly trained and dedicated staff want to stay, work here, and serve our kids. Those are the types of reasons that we are going ahead and contemplating opening our doors for limited schools of choice, so we can continue to offer all those things for all 15,000 of our students. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Bonfield, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8A, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and grant tenure status to the following teachers effective on the respective dates. Elizabeth Booth, January 26, 2015. Brenda Howe, May 29, 2015. Rachel Majewski, January 24, 2015. Thomas Muskinis, December 5, 2014. Randy Verkan, January 13, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Winery or Mrs. Demand, would you like to address this item?
Certainly, thank you. The names that were, have just been read are teachers that are being brought to the board to, for tenure. Before they come to the board, affirmative reports and tenure recommendations were received by their principals, and they have either completed or will complete the required years of probation at Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Question or an itch? Question? Okay, good. All righty. All righty. Seeing no questions or comments, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Item 8B, Leaves of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education, I'm sorry.
President? Go ahead, Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Jacqueline Jada.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Demand, do you want to address this item?
Yes, the request by the employee who is requesting a leave of absence for the next school year, which would be 2015, 2016, not 2516.
Okay.
Correct.
That would be a long.
It was a long leave.
I think we could pay her for five hundred years.
The request is, it is in consideration of what is in there in the teacher contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 8C, Resignation, and this is for board, board information only, that we do not vote on this item.
That's correct.
Thank you. The next item is 8D, Retirements.
President Burton?
Mrs. Johnson, or Mrs. Jarvis? Can you ever mix up the names?
We're having a fun time tonight, aren't we?
Yes, we're taking turns, we're doing all kinds of stuff up here. Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for services rendered by, you're all sitting down, Adele Baden, Mary Baidun, Charlene Boloski, Christina Berry, Annie Sini, Christine Dealy-Damiani, Cynthia Demann, Kay DePero, Catherine Falk, Deborah Fletcher, James Gibbons, Nancy Haas, Kelly Hafner, Kathleen Hall, Claudia Henrich, Sheila Hatcher, Bruce Johnson, Robert Jones, Susan Joslin, Kathleen Carrison, Karen Kerrigan, Christine Clemola, Deborah Kozjarski, Tanya Lindenberg, Janet Madouse, Mary Mascaro, Lynn Masucci, Paul Mills Jr., Lee Moran, Nancy Morgan, Joan Mary Nenninger, Kathleen Nichol, Craig Prokopchuk, Candace Rehm, Mary Lee Skelton, Catherine Smith, Christian Van Rentergame, and Pamela Wright.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Demand, would you like to address this item?
Thank you. Thirty-eight names that were just read.
Including your own?
Including my own, are for the resolutions of the employees who have chosen to retire from Livonia Public Schools. These employees have dedicated a combined total of seven hundred seventy-four point three years to the Livonia schools, the community, the students, and the staff. We certainly would like to thank them for their dedicated service, and we wish them well as they go on to their new adventures.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by board members? Mr. Centers?
There are a lot of familiar names to us who are around Livonia Public Schools, administrators, longtime teachers, our LEA president, Joan Mary, people who have done extraordinary things. Cindy Demand is certainly one of them. It's going to be, there's gonna be big shoes to fill. I think we've got a great staff of teachers and administrators that have learned from a lot of these people on this list. So we're sad to see them go, but we're happy to wish them a cheerful retirement, that's for sure.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend these thirty-eight people and to thank them for seven hundred seventy-four point three years of service. It's an astronomical number, and that impact cannot be overstated. These are wonderful people, some of them that we've known very, very well, and will be sorely missed. I look forward to the next seven hundred seventy-four years.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And, Mrs. Demand, it will not be the same without you here.
Thank you.
As Mr. Center said, we've worked so closely with so many folks, and those of us, most of us, our parents in this district have seen our own kids' teachers on this list, you know, here in front of us tonight. But working with you professionally has been an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I will miss coming to work. It's been, I've been doing this for twenty-one years, and Livonia is a fabulous place, so, thank you.
You're gonna have to find something to do besides the jigsaw puzzle in July of teachers' names in classrooms, though.
Are you really gonna miss us on Monday?
I will, every Monday night.
All righty, any other questions or comments? We have the motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And congratulations to all of you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Reports for the Superintendent. Dr. Leepa?
Thank you very much. It's a busy time for us all now. The spring is always a very, very busy time in our schools, and there's a lot of activities going on. In just a couple weeks, it's hard to believe that we'll be celebrating yet another class of graduates here in our school district. And so we've got a lot of activities going on, a couple of recognitions. I want to reach out to a new Eagle stout in our community. Andrew Moyer has just been recognized with the Eagle Scout recognition. We all know how hard it is in the scout organization to get to the level of Eagle Scout, and it's a significant, significant accomplishment. And Mr. Moyer has made us proud by doing this, and we will make sure to send a letter of, certificate acknowledging his work. So congratulations to Andrew Moyer. We also have recognition of a special scholarship that I'd just like to spend a couple of minutes on. It's the James P. Carley Memorial Scholarship, and there are three very deserving students that have received this this year. Alexandria Fada at Churchill, Kelly Cusara at Franklin, and Rachel Smith at Stevenson. And this particular scholarship is in honor of the former superintendent back in the late eighties, James P. Carley, who was a very, very beloved administrator in our school district for many, many years. Principal at Churchill High School, administrator in central office before becoming superintendent and passing away way, way too soon. But I just wanted to do that because Mr. Carley is just someone, if you go back, it's hard to believe it's been that long, but twenty-five years ago, he was a beloved, beloved administrator. And these students should be honored to be recognized with his scholarship that still goes on today, many, many years after. So congratulations to them. Also want to highlight, as you just voted on, a variety of retirements, which means we have a lot of work to do over the summer. And in some cases, maybe hiring some people, which we have not had the opportunity to do, and we'll look forward to doing that. But we have some key administrative positions that we have to fill, and those recommendations will be coming to you shortly. We've actually started, after knowing that the retirement incentive was going to go, started the process of posting openings in the administrative ranks, and we're in the process this week of doing interviews. And we hope to have to you very shortly, at our next meeting, recommendations for our new administrators. And it's really, really helpful to be able to have the staff know before they go home for the break who their new principal will be. And so we plan on having those principal positions filled and recommendations to you within the next several weeks. Also would highlight that last week, the state held their semi-annual revenue consensus conference, and what they do is they basically estimate what the revenues and expenses, revenues are for all of the different budgets for next year in the state budget. The amounts were down a little bit in the school aid fund, but I would consider them pretty negligible. And so we don't think it'll have a significant impact on the overall planning as the state finishes up its budgets. And would just highlight that it is crunch time in Lansing right now in regards to finishing up their budgets. And so we're in contact almost daily with either our state representatives or the people that we work with in Lansing, to get the scoop on what's going to happen. We're fighting as hard as we can for every dollar, to be fair, as it's distributed across the state of Michigan, just local school districts. And we're anxious to find out exactly how that will play out over the next few weeks as we finalize our budget for next year. So stay tuned is the word. Contact your legislature and legislator, and tell them that Livonia Public Schools and other school districts deserve a funding increase for next year to cover its ongoing increased costs or loss of enrollment, as we've been experiencing. And last, I would just, again, recognize the retirees. As you all mentioned, while there's some level of excitement to have some new blood into the school system, and it's important for us to be able to have opportunities for some of these young kids coming out of college, we need them in the profession, we need them going into the profession. And when they have a chance to work for a place like Livonia Public Schools, that's a real positive thing. But it certainly is bittersweet, because we're losing a significant amount of experience and some really, really remarkable educators. And we just had a little celebration prior to our board meeting this evening, recognizing some of these retirees. And it's, it's not lost on us in regards to the contribution they've made to our community by providing service to our kids, our own personal kids, and all fifteen thousand-plus kids in our school district. So congratulations to them, not just for retiring and their future, but congratulations for a great career, and certainly would make a special mention of Cindy, who will be losing shortly. Cindy and I actually started in the school district together, so you just found out how long I've been in the school district by Cindy saying when she started as a teacher. And so we were in the first cohort together. We went through Leadership Livonia together, a special chamber of commerce program for leaders. And of course, I have worked closely with Cindy since she's come to central office. And no one works any harder or is more dedicated or cares more about her job than Cindy. She's a remarkable person. In the July, late evenings, when you're seeing a car in the parking lot, it's because someone is figuring out how those teachers are gonna fill all those jobs, those thousand jobs in the, for the start of school, and she's hard at work. So we certainly appreciate everything that she's done and wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 10A, First Reading of Board Policy, BD1, Formulation of Bylaws. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, actually, the first two policies that you have before you tonight are policies that just clarify the process when you're passing either a new bylaw or a changed bylaw or a new or changed policy. And the board, in looking at its policies, wanted to make sure that these two particular policies reflected current practice. The actual current language is pretty vague, and so the proposal that you have in front of you for these first two items are to make that more clear, that there's a first reading for any proposed change or new policy to the school board policies, and then a vote at a meeting following that meeting where there was a first reading. And so, as you know, procedurally, it often, it does go to committee first, before it even comes to a first reading. And so these particular policies and bylaws are vetted quite clearly. The language just clarifies your current practice that you want to continue.
Thank you. This will not be voted on tonight. This will be put on our agenda for a second reading at our next voting meeting. Since Dr. Leepa covered 10A and B, that brings us to Item 10C, Second Reading of Board Policy, IHF Graduation Requirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. Policy IHF, Section 2, Graduation Requirements.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. And Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, again, we have had actually quite a bit of discussion in this past school year about the graduation requirements. And we're discussing at length, because the state had actually changed its requirements for certain graduation requirements, and created some flexibilities for consideration for local school districts. And so the board spent quite a bit of time talking about that, and actually changed this policy earlier in the year, in order to utilize the opportunity that the state provided, where we can utilize career technical education classes, our CTE classes at the Career Center and at the high schools. We can use those programs to meet certain science and world language requirements. And so the board actually already made those changes. But as we came to discover, after the board approved those changes, we actually had to have a clarification to make sure that it wasn't just CTE classes that could meet the new requirements under the state law, but it had to be CTE programs that the students were involved in, which basically meant that the students have to be in these classes for at least a year, in order for that credit to count for a credit in either the science area or world languages. And so the policy that you have before you tonight, that we reviewed both in committee, we reviewed it through a first reading, is again, just to clarify, that small change to provide us the flexibility for students to be able to take a CTE full class, full-year class, and have that come for one of these other requirements.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this item? All righty. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 10D, Second Reading of Board Policy, BHA, Code of Ethics. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. Policy B- document for the following, policy BHA, code of ethics.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there question, any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. I would just like to have my fellow board members and the public know that I will not be supporting this, this evening. I have much concerns about the procedure where it indicates that change has been, the board operating procedures have been changed, and they will now read. Where'd it go? I got it here. And this is the one that I have most concern with. It says, "I will come to board meetings prepared to discuss and take action on agenda items. I will study materials in the board packet. Follow established board operating procedures for additional information prior to each board meeting." And the board operating procedure was, was changed by consensus of the board, which reads, "A request to the superintendent to provide documentation or reports shall be made by the majority of the board members to the superintendent. And within two weeks, the superintendent shall respond by providing copies of the requested materials to all board members or provide reports as directed by the board." And I guess my biggest concern on that is that, number one, that we don't have a voting method in place to determine, how do we determine the majority of the board? And, you know, how are we going to do this? Is this going to be a light item, item on our, on our general meetings? But a lot of times, you know, questions in reference to contracts or invoices are usually things that happen in a very short period of time. And two weeks is going to either extend a proposal or a contract out that maybe, may or may not, the board as a whole have the opportunity to review these contracts or invoices. And I strongly feel that because we're a public entity, that everything should be very transparent. And I will not be supporting that this evening.
Are there other comments or questions by board members? Okay, I'm not sure if I had a yes on that or not. I would like to make a few comments. I believe that putting this policy in place and making the change in the proposed board operating procedures speaks exactly to the transparency. I, I agree with you, Mrs. McDonald, the transparency is extremely important in any governing body. It is extremely important for the Board of Education. And therefore, it's important that any direction to our superintendent happen at board meetings and by a majority of the board, as opposed to by an individual contacting the superintendent and directing him or her to take action on one person's request, when the other board members, let alone the public, may not even be aware of what the request is. The board, for the, for the benefit of the folks at home who, who may be tuning into this portion of the meeting, the board has, has authority to direct the superintendent only when working as a board, not as an individual. As an individual, we do not have the right to direct the superintendent. We only have the right to do that as a majority of the board. This policy does not at all stop requests to the superintendent for information, but rather it puts the policy in place so that everybody knows how these things are to happen. At any time that there is a quorum of the board, the board can take action, and we do many, many times. That can happen at a study session, at a committee, the whole meeting, at a voting meeting. The question was asked just a moment ago, how do we determine a majority of the board? We count. And if we have at least four members who are in agreement to direct the superintendent to take action in one, in one degree or one respect or another, that is a majority of the board. I am very much in favor of this policy, because I believe that it gives clear written direction that board members, when they would like additional information, or when they would like to direct the superintendent in any way, they bring that to the board so that we can determine the proper people to gather the information, make sure that the folks who have expertise in those areas are looking over those board requests, and most importantly, that all board members receive the information back. For example, one, one example that we've been talking about at length with this is, is requests for copies of checks. And it's been discussed by the board that, that that may be an appropriate question at times, and by all means, that's something that we ought to be sending, we ought to be making sure all of our board members are, are aware of those requests. And we would send that kind of type of a request to our auditors, who would check into, you know, the thorough background of what's going on with that, and then report back to the entire board. That is one example of, of several. But I am very much in favor of this policy, because I, I want it to be very transparent, to be very clear that the majority of the board directs the superintendent and does so when a quorum is present at a board meeting, and all board members receive that information back. So I will be supporting this, this motion tonight. Mrs. Bonnefield?
President Burton, I too will be supporting this motion. I think what we're talking about is a lack of transparency is exactly why this policy was written. "I will no longer tolerate individual board members collecting information and making decisions for the entire board without their knowledge based on the information, as well as continuing to provide that information to only a select few community members. If there is a question worth pursuing, it needs to be pursued transparently and by the entire board." I don't think any one of us has the power or right to receive information and single-handedly make choices on whether or not that information should be pursued.
Thank you. Are there, are there any other questions or comments on this item? Mrs. McDonald?
One other item for me to bring forward, asking for copies of contracts or invoices by an individual board member, to me, is our duty to ask for things. Now, the information should be shared as it's received, but, you know, as I have stated in the past, you know, I don't have a lot of free time during the day to make phone calls. But I did contact Plymouth Caton Schools and talked to the secretary of the board, and that's exactly how their policies are for their board members. Board member has a question, they go to, goes to the board president, the board president, then asks the superintendent, and then all information dispersed to all board members. And in the past, you know, when I've asked for copies of items, it, no one ever said they couldn't give it to all the board members. And I understand you wanting to have a procedure in place, but to me, that's our duty, is to oversee.
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I think there is some confusion about what this policy is stating. We are not stating in any way, shape, or form that any board member cannot ask a question of the superintendent or any of the staff if he chooses to have the staff provide that information. This is not about asking questions. This is about directing work and asking the superintendent or the staff to take their time to do additional work without the knowledge of the entire board. It does not in any way, shape, or form keep us from asking questions and getting our answers. It is absolutely about asking our staff to take their time, stop what they're doing, and do work for us as individuals. We have, and since this policy was written, on several occasions, by consensus of the board, asked our superintendent to continue to do work. We've asked him on the Perrinville case to, to do more work in Research Force. We've asked him on the different properties that we potentially are selling to do more work. We have directed the superintendent as a board that we need more information to continue and make a decision, and the superintendent has graciously put his staff to work at our be, at our behest. It does not preclude us from asking any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Centers?
I just want to clarify why I'm supporting the proposal tonight. I think, again, there, there's a reason the community elects seven people on this board. It's because that not any one of us really can represent the entire community, or also everyone brings a different perspective, they bring different knowledge, different ideas and strengths. Having a board of seven people, where you have a majority make decisions to direct the superintendent, I think is a real strength. It's good for the school district, it's good for democracy. I just think that it's really in the intention and what we're supposed to be doing here.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment on this, this item? Yeah, I would just like to respond back. Mrs. McDonald, I absolutely agree with you that it is our duty as school board members to pursue items. But it is also our duty as a school board to work as a, as a board, as a group together. And absolutely, I agree with you, if we have any comments, concerns, questions, it is our duty to bring them to this board team. And this board team has the authority to go forward. If, if we individually could direct the superintendent or the staff, we could have a superintendent and the staff running in seven different directions, but we simply don't have that legal right. We do have the legal right to come together as a board and by a majority of the board, direct the superintendent to do what the board wishes. So we absolutely have a duty, and, and I believe that this is, is following that duty to a T. Are there any other questions or comments? All righty, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
No.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion?
Motion carries.
Okay. Also, for the benefit of the, of the public, Mrs. Laura was unable to be in town tonight. Therefore, according to board policy, she cannot vote on this item. However, she did request that I let the public know that she will be signing our code of ethics. She was unable to be in town tonight, which is the only reason she was unable to be at this meeting and vote on the item. But she is in support of it and asked me to let folks know that she will be signing it. What I mean by that, for those who may not be aware, there are two signed copies of our code of, code of ethics that do hang in our boardroom. Those have been prepared for our signatures, so they will be hanging in the board office. The next item on our agenda is item 10E, approval of resolution for Wayne Risa board election. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution to designate Colleen Burton as the local district's Wayne Risa election representative, Mark Johnson as the alternate, and James Petrie as the Wayne Risa candidate for whom a vote should be cast.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any comments or questions by board members? Sing none. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is item 10F, hearing from board members. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you do the honors this evening, please?
I will. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our Holmes students and our art teacher for bringing the great art to us once again. Unfortunately, it is the last art gallery that we will have for the year, since our school year is quickly coming to a close. But we have been assured that the art gallery program will continue next year, and we will get to see from many of our, our very talented students. I'd like to thank the LPS Education Foundation, Diane Paliselli, and several of the scholarship board members for their presentation regarding the foundation update, where we're going, what we're doing, and the great deeds that the foundation is doing. And they also talked about the educational grants, which go into, directly into our classrooms, and the really great and interesting things that the teachers are doing with these grants. And I would encourage those teachers to come back and hopefully share some of that with the Board of Education, because some of the stuff you're doing is just fascinating. Also, just a reminder, mark your calendars, the summer's going to go fast. Bounce Back is August 25th at Stevenson. We had an absolutely fantastic presentation by the Livonia First Robotics Team, the Warriors. We, the boardroom was packed once again with many of the participants. And the list of companies in our community that have provided dollars, have provided in-kind products, and also provided their time and skills to make this program successful is, is really overwhelming. The First Robotics Program as, as an idea, as a program in general throughout the state and the country is, is fantastic. It is amazing, the, the different opportunities it provides to our kids. And it's not just about robotics. There are fundraising and advertising and art and you name it. They're probably doing it with this, this program. And it's recognized across the country by colleges and also by the industries that are out there. It's, I, I can't say enough about the program. And Mrs. Carlini spends, one of our teachers spends amazing amounts of time to make this program successful. Let's see, we also have, what else do we have? We have teachers that were tenured. Congratulations, I know that's an accomplishment. And we appreciate all your time and effort to make that happen. And the retirements that we just spoke about, 774.3 years. We want to say congratulations on your retirement, but also you all will be profoundly, profoundly missed. And I'm quite certain there is not one board member that isn't personally affected in multiple ways by different retirements that are happening. And, and as much as we wish you well, our, our kids are going to miss you a lot. But best wishes. And then I have just a statement that I'd like to read, if that would be okay.
You've got to work, your members tonight, go right ahead.
I'm going to read this so that I don't get too far off track. "Right now, we are at a crossroads. Until the state of Michigan changes the school funding model, we will continue to make cuts. There is no more low-hanging fruit. These cuts are all going to be very, very difficult. This isn't about turning off a light when you leave a room or asking our parents and our PTA to provide Kleenex to our classrooms. The choices we have in front of us directly impact the students and the education that they receive. I challenge each and every one of you to learn about school funding so that you can speak intelligently about the dollars that are available for our classrooms and the general operating budget, which is much different than the entire funding for our system. We're talking about classroom dollars. There are few income generating or cost containment..." There are few income generating or cost containment ideas that are going, that are not going to cause an uprising from some group in the community. Raise your voices, we hear you, but in the end, our hands are tied. We have an obligation to balance the budget with what the state provides. If you truly want to affect change for our children, take this fight to Lansing. Tell your legislators exactly what your Board of Education is doing about the programs we're cutting, the schools that we're closing, and the land that we are selling. Tell them how your children will never become verbal or that they are going to turn to TV junkies because there's nowhere for them to play. Tell them that our great Lighthouse District is only a shadow and how you are going to move out of the district because we have ripped the rug out from underneath your family. Tell them with the same tears in your eyes that you have when you tell me. Thank you.
Are there others who would like to add anything to hearing from board members this evening? Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. As Dr. Leepa mentioned earlier, it's graduation time and something I know, Mrs. Burton and I, share this year very dear to our hearts and please, 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 students, be very careful and make good choices. You know, we want to see you come back again and again and again and again, come visit and live here and just make really, really good choices, please. Thank you.
How much for the board members this evening? Mr. Centers.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Bonfield, who I don't think we have a better advocate or school funding on our board. We are facing a slow starvation of public schools and you are always the first to point that out and make sure it's not caught, it's not lost in everything that we do on a daily basis, so I appreciate that so much. And I know a lot of community members and people that work in our schools appreciate that, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments this evening from board members? Alrighty, it has been a very full evening, thank you for those of you who have hung on with us till the very end. I wish you a nice evening, we are adjourned. Well done, Tammy.